In the name of God.
Amen.
Do you leave us some questions?
I fully believe this is the right word in the United States of America. Consider it a weapon for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to spread the minutes of interim meeting. On the agenda?
Come on, let me see.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'd like to recognize our youth court judge, Mike Dickinson, and representatives from Casey Family Programs. Retired Judge John Hudson, and Mississippi CPS Commissioner Andrea Sanders.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Mike Dickinson. I serve as Harrison County's Youth Court Judge. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to come here today and present at this workshop on these very important issues, important to our community. This presentation will focus primarily on four topics. You all should, I think, have an agenda in front of you. First, we will hear from retired Youth Court Judge John Hudson. John served many years as the Jurist in Residence for Mississippi Youth Courts, and he plans to cover Mississippi law and federal law regarding taking a child into MD CPS custody. Next, we will hear from Sean Couch with the National Center on Substance Abuse and Child Welfare, who will discuss best practice standards for improving child welfare services, including infants born positive for illicit substances and plans of safe care. After that, we will hear from Christopher Church with Casey Family Programs, who will provide child welfare data from 2003 to the present regarding Harrison County as compared with the state of Mississippi as a whole and as compared nationally. This presentation will include data regarding numbers of children in custody, removals, reentry rates, foster care placements, and the like. Finally, we will hear from MD CPS Commissioner Andrea Sanders, who plans to discuss relevant CPS policies and regulations, along with challenges affecting child welfare systems. I will be giving a two-minute warning, not trying to be rude, just want to keep us on schedule, and I would ask that you please try to hold your questions till the end. We will have a time for questions at the end. And for purposes of clarity, we are not requesting that the board of supervisors vote on anything today. This presentation is purely for educational purposes. So, thank you again, and I will now turn it over to Judge Hudson to cover our first slide.
Okay. Can we get the panel to that?
Do you need a minute?
Okay.
Can I be sir?
I'm John.
Can I speak to the...
Is that thing out of focus or is it just me?
It's larger.
And we got to pick up and down trying to which one that is. Okay. Good morning. I'm John Hudson. I was a youth court judge, county court judge, for 32 years in Natchez, and then after my time there, I served as a Jurist in Residence for seven years after that, working with youth courts across the state. My job here, and I appreciate your having me here today to share with you, my responsibility is to share what the law is and what the judge is compelled to do by that law, what all of us were compelled to do by the law that's out there. Before I actually get into that, I want to give you a little bit of background for the basis of the law, and we know that there is a presumption under the law that all of us have the right to parent our own children. That's presumption, that makes sense, right? And that parents have the right to parent their children is a constitutional right under the United States Constitution. It's also a liberty interest that parents have had familial relations with their children is natural law, that's kind of grown up as the, as human structures were developed going forward, and it's a right that quite frankly pre-exists government and one that we retain as people, separate and apart from any statute or any of that sort. So, the rebuttal presumption here is that we all have the right to parent our own children, and that's the basis upon which the law has been developed going forward. However, it is rebuttable when there is maltreatment of children. The state and the federal government both have placed the responsibility of dealing with those maltreatment circumstances with the youth courts around the country, only here in Mississippi, but the country as a whole, and that responsibility is laid out, and I'm about to lay out to you here, under the law as to what the court has to follow to deal with those circumstances. Let's look at that a little bit. The whole basis of the law is based on what, on the Latin concept of parent's patria, parent of the country. The youth court judge has that responsibility in their local jurisdictions, and that responsibility is based, they have to act in what's known as the best interest of the child. And when we talk about that, there's three main focuses when the court is moving forward in a case, acting in the best interest of children that are in their jurisdiction. And the first one is paramount. The court looks at the safety of the child, and that is a paramount interest. But beyond that, there is the interest of well-being of a child, and this would be medical, mental health, educational, social, any type of, all of the, all of the forces that basically involve in a child's life, and the court is looking to make sure that those are being appropriately taken care of. And then finally, permanency of the child. What we mean by this is that every child's got to do better if they're in a permanent situation as far as their home life is concerned. If because of that maltreatment, they have to be removed from their home, then the court is, by federal law, we'll talk about that in just a moment, required to work with the family, to attempt to pull that family back together, and if that doesn't work, to find a permanent solution so the child does not linger in what we call foster care drift. All right. This is the code section that basically directs the judge, who took an oath to follow this law. This is the code section that lays out what the judge must find. First is, he's got to know whether or not he has jurisdiction. Is the family from this county? Is the family, are the children from this county? Did the event happen in this county? Those are all jurisdictional questions. Then, the next is probably where we start getting to the meat of what the court has to do, and that's the child is experiencing what's known as a significant risk of harm. Okay. This is a new, new language of legislation placed into the law that was done back in 2020. It said before that the child was endangered, and this kind of spells it out in more precise language. The court has to find that the child is experiencing a significant risk of harm, and there's no parent, guardian, custodian available who can care for them in that situation. And that's that one right there. Okay. All right. It continues, this is new to the law, this language is new to the law. It's not new to the law that you cannot remove a child based on poverty by itself, but the legislature spelled it out in the last section of the legislature. A child is not neglected solely because the parent or the guardian, the custodian, is failed to provide food, clothing, or shelter necessary to sustain that child's life. They're not neglected when the failure is caused primarily by financial inability. So, financial inability alone is not a grounds to remove a child from a family under any circumstance unless release services have been provided to that family, and that family has refused those services, and as a result, the child is in imminent risk of harm. A little higher level than significant, but imminent risk of harm there. Okay. All right. The idea of, of what the court has to find at the very beginning is that there's probable cause to believe that a child is within their jurisdiction, and there's some added language in the legislation that is significant to us today, and one of those added languages occurred not too long ago. It was first in 2017, the legislature included this language in the youth court law, and that's that removal cannot be based solely upon a positive drug test of the parent or of the newborn child for marijuana. So, the fact that, that a child is born with marijuana in their system in and of itself is not enough for the removal of that child. And then, they also, they also added in 2022, you know, that was when medical marijuana was, was approved in Mississippi, and they added then that a parent cannot be removed, a child cannot be removed from a parent simply because they're a code or cardholder for medical marijuana. I don't think any judge would have done that anyway, but that was part of the medical marijuana statute that occurred in 2022. But in addition to that, they added this language, and this was added into 2019. You may base a removal on a positive drug test of other controlled substances other than marijuana, only, only if there is a nexus between the use of the drug and the inability to provide proper care or supervision of the child. My opinion is, it's always been the law, but apparently in some areas that was not being carried out that way, so the legislature still fit to spell it out in, in, in the legislation. And what that means is, is that the use of whatever drug it is, call it whatever drug you want to call out, there has to be a connection between that use of that drug and the abuse or neglect of the child. There has to be a connection between those two before there can be a removal. So, that has to be presented to and proven in court that that nexus did in fact exist. And of course, as always, there's no other reasonable alternative to custody in that, in that case. Okay. Now, Mississippi law sets out mandated reporters. It has a long list of people, including doctors and lawyers and school officials and teachers. They name all of these names, and then the very last thing it says is, "and any other person." I guess it could have started with the "any other person." All people, all of us are mandated reporters under Mississippi law for abuse and/or neglect. And the statute says, "Any person who knows or has reason to suspect that a child is being abused or neglected by their legal custodian or caregiver, they are required by law to make that report to the, to the Department of Child Protection Services." And there's the code section for that. So, that means all of us, every one of us in this circle is in that responsibility to make that report. And you can also, you make it by calling the hotline, and there it's the hotline number for everybody to see, or you can actually make the report online at reportabuse.mdcps.mississippi.gov. But that is a responsibility of all of us to protect the children that we, that we so desperately want to be protected. Now, in addition to those Mississippi statutes that laid out what the court had to do, the federal government has through legislation added additional requirements on the court. And I was asked sometime back when I was sharing with our Supreme Court, "Well, how can the federal government tell a state judge what to do?" Well, they don't really tell you what to do, but as you probably know very well, they say, "If you don't do this, we're going to cut the money off." And that's how they tell youth court judges what to do. But what they're saying here is really good, and it's, it's an improvement to, to the, the process that you go through as a judge to make a determination. And here are the couple of things that happen. And ordinarily, what happens to is that there's a call in the middle of the night that there is an abused or neglected child, or there's a call from the hospital that we have a circumstance with a family involving drugs that we need to deal with. The initial finding that the court has to make, and this is a court, the judge has to make when the call takes place, and they have to make a determination in their own mind before they can enter an order removal that the maintenance of that child at its home, at his or her home, is contrary to his or her welfare. In other words, the child will be in danger if the child is in their home. And the, and the court is going to ask the social worker or whoever it is that's calling them, or doctor, about those particular circumstances because federal law requires them to. The idea being here, going back, remember to that first slide, that we have the right to parent our children. So, here the court is saying, "All right, yeah, you have that right, but if your child, if his, his stay at home places him or her in danger, then we've got to act to protect the child." Remember, the first level is the safety of the child. Then, the other, and this is a little more, a little more in depth, and I could really talk for about two hours on this one, but it requires the court to find that CPS, the Child Protection Services, has performed what's known as reasonable efforts to prevent removal. And this is a federal responsibility, a federal guideline that is placed on the judges. The judges have to make that finding, and within, you know, 48 hours, they have to have a shelter hearing, and they have to make that finding at least at that shelter hearing or within 60 days after the removal. And what they're talking about there is, what has the department done with this family to keep that child at home? What have you done, CPS? And CPS will then share with the court all the actions that they've taken to make, to assist that family, to make that home a place where that child can stay without his welfare being at risk in that situation. And the court has to make those findings on the record that, that those happened. If they don't make those findings, guess what happens? They lose the money. They lose the money for the foster care payments that are made from the federal government, the reimbursements that are made are lost for the entirety of the time that child is in custody. So, it's a big loss to the state, to the, to the department when there are several of these kids that were in that situation. And I can tell you that not too many years ago, there were lots of kids that were in that situation, but the courts have improved themselves so much that it's probably saving, and I think the commissioner can probably say better than me, but saving, have saved the state millions, millions of dollars in reimbursement from the federal government for that. But those are reasonable efforts, and those are outlined, and there's, there's eight or nine different types of reasonable efforts the court's going to look at. I can give you one example would be that if there are other family members who can come in and, and actually be in that house to take care of the child and make sure that the mother or father, whoever it might be, is following all of the, the plans going forward that the department has done to help that family reinvent itself so they can care for the child, then that would be a reasonable effort if they're willing to come in. Just one example. Have services been provided? Another example. But it's a requirement under federal law that the court make that finding in every case. All right. And you might wonder, why do the feds do this? And then what I'm about to give you came from the, the information that the committee that dealt with this laid out as to their reasons why they wanted this to happen. They wanted to prevent unnecessary removals, number one. We know, and I know that some of you are probably familiar with what's called ACEs, adverse childhood experiences. We know that, that they have a tremendous impact on the children that experience a childhood experience. An ACE, for instance, the death of the parent is an ACE. A parent going to prison is an ACE. But guess what else is an ACE? The removal of the child. We know for a fact that the removal of a child is an ACE, and we know that, that children that have higher ACE scores are more likely to end up in, in foster care itself. And they wanted to prevent what's known as foster care drift. When foster care was really popular, it was way back in the 1960s, there was this thought that if we could take a child out of that situation and put him in a good home, that that child would grow to be a, a solid citizen and can be a contributing citizen, and that was the thought. Well, it didn't work, and what happened was children often got caught up in what's known as foster care drift, moving from place to place to place to place. I don't know, this from my own personal experience. When I was a teenager, I lived two streets, two houses down from a lady who took foster kids in, and there was one guy when I was about 14 years old, we became really good friends for about two months, and he was a good guy, had a good time with him, but he told me, I said, you know, he was about 14, two inches. He said, "I have been in 11 different homes." I was 14 years old. 11 different homes. And guess what? Two months later, he was in his 12th because he left my neighborhood. He drifted somewhere else. And the idea was to do away with that. That's not a good thing for children or for the state. They wanted to act, act as a safeguard against potential inappropriate agency action, a mediator, somebody in between that would look over the shoulder and say, "Yes, you can do this," or "No, you can't do that," that the agency would not have the ability to just take action based just on what the agency decided was appropriate. And then, there was this expectation by the legislation that the court would have what we call here a meaningful hearing on reasonable efforts to determine whether that child has been, and that family has been appropriately handled in, by the, by the department, and making sure that this was what had to happen under those circumstances. And then, in the end, if a child has to be removed because nothing that the court or the department has done has corrected the circumstances there, then there is a responsibility to accomplish permanency for that child, and there's all kinds of regulations there on the court. Within 15 months, the child is supposed to be in a permanent home. You start first with family members, and you can find a family member, and then if you can't find a family member with a, with a person willing to adopt and get that child into that situation, the adoption completed, hopefully within 15 months. It doesn't happen all the time, but it happens much of the time because of the responsibilities placed upon the courts to get that done.
Judge, we've got two minutes.
Okay. Federal state law provides, process must be difficult, and there you got why. Reasonable efforts to prevent intentionally makes it difficult to remove a child from the family. That's what the law does. Should be difficult to remove a five-day-old child from their parents. Requiring reasonable efforts to reunify intentionally presses the agency to act to keep the family together, and then if that doesn't work, intentionally presses the agency to get them into some type of permanent situation as soon as possible. We know foster care doesn't work. These are just some statistics. We have, this was a couple of weeks ago, maybe more or less than this right now, but 4,120 children in foster care in Mississippi. Statistically, those children, less than 50% chance of graduating high school, 3% chance of going on to higher education, and 1% chance of graduating. So, we know from all the facts out there from science at foster, that, that the state of Mississippi is not a good parent. Okay? So, the ultimate goal is doing for children we serve that which we would want others to do for us and our families if we found ourselves in the same circumstance. Doing for children and families we serve what we would want others to do to us if we found ourselves in that circumstance. And remember, all of this is confidential, and the reason why it's confidential is to protect the children, number one, and to give the families and the children a opportunity to, to create that reunification if possible, and then to make sure that going forward, that these circumstances remain confidential so the child cannot be, cannot be injured going forward. All right. And that's my presentation. I appreciate you being here and allowing me to share with you that presentation. I certainly appreciate being here with you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I know we're not supposed to ask questions, but can we get a, this slideshow emailed to us?
Sure. I mean, it's right there. Y'all got it.
Okay. I was going to ask the same thing. I would definitely like that information that I saw. Sorry for being late, but the information I saw was like, all of it.
And I'll, and I'll be here with everyone else to answer questions at the end when it gets to that point. Okay?
Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right. Well, first, I would say thank you for having me today. Sean Couch, I'm with the National Center on Substance Use and Child Welfare, and we've existed in this space for over 20-plus years, trying to figure out one goal. How do we improve outcomes for families that are affected by substance use and then that intersection with child welfare as well? A little bit about myself, I have 18, 19 years of experience in this space as well. Again, the intersection of substance use, treatment, and child welfare. I will say, I'm a born and bred Texan, so I may have told those before, like the word y'all may accidentally slip out while I'm talking. It's just going to happen. But I do live in Oklahoma. Real quick, it was interesting, I had a meeting earlier this morning, and in Oklahoma, I mean, we're dodging tornadoes left and right all the time, and they always say, "You know, there's a tornado about to hit," because it sounds like a freight train. Well, I'm in a meeting earlier this morning, of course, the torrential rain is happening. I had no idea that there was a railroad crossing close by. So, I'm in the meeting trying to be cool, calm, and collected while I hear literally, you know, a railcar go by, and I'm like, "All right, is it time to duck and dodge?" But anyway, excited to be here, first time in Mississippi. I want to talk about how do we improve outcomes for infants that have been prenatally exposed to substances. I'm going to give some, some federal context, but more importantly, I want to talk through some examples that other states like Texas, Georgia, Florida, others have done to really improve outcomes for families. Just a real quick acknowledgement, letting you know that this presentation is funded by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, and long story short, it's basically whatever comes out of my mouth, I own, not OJJP. So, I want to start with, real quick, what does the data tell us about infant prenatal substance exposure? And again, you'll get a copy of all of these slides as well. But first thing, what it tells us, there's been a comprehensive review of multiple articles over 40 years that showed that, yes, there are both short-term and long-term impacts to prenatal substance exposure. It could be anything from birth anomalies, fetal growth, neuro-behavioral, sometimes withdrawal, but then also if you look long-term, whether it's achievement, behavior, cognition, growth, language, there are, there are effects of prenatal substance exposure. And again, I, one of the resources that I link at the end of this has that very exhaustive study that goes into various substances and the short-term or long-term impacts of those specific substances. But I think one of the things that we want to look at is not just, okay, what are the effects of prenatal substance exposure, but if we look at children being placed in out-of-home care, one of the things that we see across the nation is that there is an impact that when it comes to parental alcohol and drug abuse, it is a condition that's been associated with removal for children, again, associated with children being placed in out-of-home care. But again, we're talking about the infant piece, so one of the things we really see is that's really, really highlighted when it comes to infants. If you look at under the age of one on the slide there, you can see, again, the national average is about 51%, but in most states, it's above 60%. But I will tell you, if you ever talked to a child welfare caseworker, if you ever talked to, you know, an OB-GYN, or you talked to a birthing hospital, they'll tell you it's actually higher than that. And then one thing that you will notice, again, I said, born and bred in Texas, again, Louisiana is one of your partners. I've driven I-10 multiple times. If you look at Louisiana's data, I trust me, there's not a magical force field whenever you cross into the state of Louisiana to where their numbers are different. So, I always want to point out that a lot of times it has to do with how states collect the data, you know, so, and again, the reference that I have there goes into great detail about that. So, I just don't want you to like, look at Louisiana, "Oh, man, they're phenomenal." Like, mm, they're collecting data a little differently. So, but the big point is, is this is something that all states are seeing to some degree, is they're seeing prenatal substance exposure, and they're seeing that as a, as a condition for removal. Now, not the only condition, but one of the conditions for removal. So, then the question is, is, well, then if we, we know that there are a lot of infants that are being prenatally exposed to substances, should out-of-home care be the solution? And what we see based off the data and based off of research is that not necessarily, there is a unique risk for children with prenatal substance exposure that are placed in care. First, like was mentioned earlier, placement disruptions, being in multiple placements, that's one of those unique risks. And again, that could be from contributing factors such as maybe insufficient training for the caregiver that they're with at that point in time, maybe the Maybe the caregiver, the foster home that they're going into, not being informed that there was prenatal substance exposure. And then also, the children having simply complex needs. And again, that results in placement disruptions as well, which it's this cycle. So then the question is, is how do we, to the greatest extent possible, create a safe, healthy environment in the home so that they can go home again after the birth event to their family? With the understanding that that might not be the case for every one. I'm not saying every single one. But what we're saying is, what can we do to surround mom, the family, and the infant with as many supports and services to create a safe, secure environment at the birth event? And that's where I want to talk about again, how are states doing just that? How are they coordinating these services for infants that have been prenatally exposed to substances? And that's where CARE comes into play, the Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act of 2016. And what CARE basically did is it clarified the types, the type of population that's eligible for this thing called a plan of safe care, which I'm gonna talk about here in just a moment. And basically, those that are eligible for a plan of safe care are any infants that have been identified as being affected by substance use or withdrawal or FASD, fetal alcohol spectrum disorders. So that's the populations that really this thing called a plan of safe care. And I will say, this was something that was enacted in 2016. But really, we saw the Trump administration during his first administration really begin to live this out and empower states to figure this piece out. And say, okay, we want to describe the population. And then we want to empower you to be able to live out how plans of safe care implemented within your specific states. It says that the plan of safe care should be not just about the infant, but also the affected family or caregiver, because you know infants do not live in silos in and of themselves. So that's what the plan of safe care should focus on. And then it says, the last piece is, this care legislation should be able to say that a real plan of safe care was given to a real family and that family connected with real services. So again, you're gonna have this slide deck. I'm not gonna go into all of these bullet points you see here, but these are some of the plan of safe care components. And we see this across states, again, whether it's Texas, Tennessee, Georgia, others, is that plan of safe care, again, it addresses both the mothers, the family caregivers, and the infant's needs. And again, they may look a little bit different state to state. I just, again, I just wrapped up some work with Texas. And their plan of safe care was about an eight-page document that kind of served as the grounding point for their plan of safe care. And then you have other states like Tennessee where I think it's like a 12-page document. But the big piece I want you to take away from this is these are the types of components that we see comprised within a plan of safe care. Now, what are the benefits from a plan of safe care? First one is it reduces the likelihood of crisis at the birth event. And it almost makes sense. Like, if we can go further upstream and get mama connected with the plan of safe care in that prenatal space, then we can get her connected to substance use treatment. Then we can ensure that we address any housing insecurity, insecurities, food insecurities, all those pieces to where at the birth event, there's not a crisis. And we're able to say that the infant can go home to a safe, secure environment. You know, and I tell people all the time, like, a regular birth event is chaotic. You know, so it's like, how can we, again, reduce the crisis at the birth event? Again, another thing that we see families benefiting from a plan of safe care is that it ensures the ongoing safety and well-being of families. And again, one of the things we found that it does is it reduces maternal and infant mortality rates. And like I said, again, it's one of those deals, like, we're getting them connected to services earlier. And we're using the plan of safe care as a coordination tool for that. Some of the trends that we're seeing across multiple states when it comes to a plan of safe care is, and I talked about it a little bit earlier, is instead of waiting until the birth event to do a plan of safe care, moving further upstream. Making it to where OB-GYNs can introduce a plan of safe care to the pregnant mom. Making it to where substance use treatment providers can initiate a plan of safe care. You're moving further upstream so that they can obtain those concrete supports so that they can develop that recovery network, again, in advance of the birth event. And then one of the things that we see is that it helps to ultimately reduce the need for child welfare involvement and family separation. But the why behind that is because, again, we're creating those safe, secure environments in advance of the birth event. What you see here, man, this writing looks way more tiny than whenever I developed this. So again, you'll get a copy of the deck. What you see here, this is an example of a plan of safe care service pathway that was developed for the state of Texas and which their system very closely mirrors Mississippi's system. But what they allow for is community providers can actually identify a pregnant woman via screening in that prenatal space. And they can initiate that plan of safe care. And then what normally happens at the birth event is the hospital, again, works with child welfare to identify if the infant has been considered affected by substance use. And then what child welfare does is they can then, they either screen in or screen out the reports. And if they screen them in, of course, they're the ones that create the plan of safe care. But if they screen out, they connect them with a community provider who can then create that plan of safe care with the family. So one of the things that we see states doing is creating a plan of safe care service pathway that does just this, that it describes who has the ability to create a plan of safe care. How does it move with mom and baby to the birth event? Does the birthing hospital know what to do with the plan of safe care? Because to be honest, it can be this real cool, phenomenal tool. But if it gets to the birth event and the hospital doesn't know what to do with it, it's all for naught. And then if child welfare does have to get involved, does child welfare know what to do with the plan of safe care? So they really find value in creating that service pathway. The other thing that we've seen states find value in is creating a newborn risk assessment tool. You know, a newborn risk assessment tool, something that's used at the birthing hospital that helps them to assess the health, safety, and well-being of the newborn and to identify what resources and supports does the family need for those infants that are born prenatally exposed to substances? And again, there's several different versions of an NRA, a newborn risk assessment tool that we've seen implemented throughout the nation. But this is in essence of what they do, is to help assess the health and safety and well-being and then to identify those resources and supports for the family before they discharge from the birthing hospital. And then those resources that they identify go right into the plan of safe care. One of the things that we have seen as well is that collaborative courts, you know, intervention courts are very well-positioned to support infants with prenatal substance exposure, such as the work that Judge Dickerson's doing here in Harrison County. Because they have the ability to convene a multi-agency collaboration. They take that family-centered approach. They really foster information sharing. And then they are that piece that can help with oversight, accountability, and really ensure that there is a focus on outcomes. That's why I love the work that, again, Judge Dickerson and many other courts across the state of Mississippi are doing. And I think this is just one of the things we're like, man, we're seeing a lot of great results with states that are leveraging these collaborative courts or these intervention courts when it comes to supporting infants with prenatal substance exposure. So really quick, some of the strategies that we've seen work well with plans of safe care. If it's like, okay, how do we take our plan of safe care to the next level? To ensure that it's not necessarily just a check-in-the-box to say, yeah, we're living out the federal legislation and the legislation of our state. But how do we ensure that we're accomplishing the meaning behind the plan of safe care? First, it's involving partners, be they child welfare, substance use treatment, medical, you know, your home visiting, your WIC offices, just are we involving the courts? All the partners, are we getting them involved? And are we coordinating care? That's the design of the plan of safe care, to do just that, to ensure there's not silos when it comes to delivering care. Another key strategy is, again, I've talked about it, developing that prenatal plan of safe care. Again, engaging medical providers, I've talked about that a little bit. That's a key strategy. Using peer recovery support. I would tell you, I did some work in Oklahoma where we set up a clinic where a mom could come in and get both her prenatal care and her substance use treatment care all under one roof. And it was going pretty well. We saw a high uptick, but we're still trying to figure out, man, how can we take it to the next level? When we began to utilize peers, women that have walked that journey and they can stand shoulder to shoulder with that mom and say, no, there is a way through. And I'm gonna walk with you through this. When we began to connect those moms with peers, we saw success skyrocket. So again, using peer recovery support has been a key strategy. Having coordinators, you know, some states call them CARE coordinators, who can maybe come to the hospital and make that initial connection with the mom at the birth event has been a great strategy. And again, we've seen this plan of safe care really result in empowering families. In fact, in some states, they call it their recovery resume. And I'll never forget, again, I said, I live in Oklahoma. And whenever we implemented plans of safe care, they chose this model called a binder model. Basically, like imagine your old-school, like Franklin Covey, you know, planner, which, believe it or not, some people still carry those. But imagine a Franklin Covey planner-style plan of safe care. And I remember when we were talking through this, me, I'm a tech guy. Like, I'll stand in line at Apple for like the latest iPhone. That's me. And I'm like, there is no way women are gonna carry this physical binder. And I was so wrong. They carried it everywhere they went. They bedazzled the mess out of it like it was theirs. You know, they showed up to the birth event, boom, here's my plan of safe care. Here's how I've been working on my recovery. Here's how, you know, providers have helped me address, you know, my food insecurities, blah, 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 like all of that. And we even had instances where the mom actually called child welfare on herself. So hey, just wanna let you know, you know, my child is gonna be born, you know, exposed to substances. Here's what we've been doing. Here's how I've been walking my recovery journey. And child welfare shows up, sees this plan of safe care, and like, yes, this answers the questions that we're looking to ask. Awesome. Thanks, Judge. So the last thing I'll leave you with is I want to show you an image. If I pick a state that's really like living out plan of safe care in a meaningful way, this is one example. Again, teeny tiny writing on some of it, but you'll get a copy of the slides. But we see some states looking at all of their programs that are serving families affected by parental substance use and infants exposed to substances. They're figuring out how do they create alignment between all these major providers? And this is one state example. This is Oklahoma's example. But the beautiful thing is, whenever I look at Harrison County, you have the partners there. Like, you're right there. You have the partners that can come along and figure out, what does a Harrison County collaborative look like? You know, from the Family Intervention Court, Memorial Hospital of Gulfport, Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies, other, I mean, you have this here. And this, again, the great thing about intervention courts, they can serve as the convenor for this type of collaborative. So again, this is like what it could look like for Harrison County to really, you know, really form a collaborative that's gonna serve families and improve outcomes. I won't go through all this for time's sake, but as you can see, we do see real outcomes regarding the plan of safe care, improved infant outcomes, parental engagement, better care coordination, and enhanced judicial and system-level outcomes. There are legit measurable outcomes by implementing a plan of safe care. I won't go over that for time's sake. I'll leave you with this right here. No single agency can do it alone. When we look at families within Harrison County, it's not an intervention court issue to solve. It's not a substance use treatment issue to solve. It's not a child welfare treatment to solve. It's a Harrison County issue to solve. And it will take all providers across Harrison County figuring out, how do we come together in a meaningful way to collaborate in a meaningful way and improve outcomes for families? And I think that's it. And I will, believe I will turn it over to Casey Family today.
Thank you. Well, good morning. My name is Christopher Church. I work for Casey Family Programs. We are the nation's largest private operating foundation that is focused on safely reducing the need for foster care and building communities of hope. I'm here with my friend and colleague, Russ Woods. He oversees our foundation's work in Mississippi. We have agreements with every state and every jurisdiction that runs a foster care system. So we partner with the agency, with the community, with the legal system to try to find ways to improve the process for children and families that are involved in these procedures. So just by way of an overview, I'm gonna cover just a couple of foundational matters before I really dig into some data. I want to share some data with you that just gives a high-level overview of some of the key points in the system. So we'll look at some sort of core dynamics at first, but then we'll spend most of our time talking about removals, how often children are entering the system. We'll spend a little bit of time talking about placement, where they are placed, when they are in the system, and why that matters. And then finally, we'll finish up talking a little bit about permanency. When they leave the system, where are they going? Q and A will be at the end, so I don't know why I put that on there, but it's there. But well, there's a lot of information that could be shared in a presentation like this. And so this is really just a sampling. So my contact information's in here, so is my colleague's, Russ's. And so feel free to reach out if there's anything that we can provide to you. So one of the things I'd want to start with is just this idea of what is an effective child welfare system? And I chose the word effective very deliberately because there is no perfect child welfare system. This is a system that operates within human services. It's people making decisions that impact lives day in and day out. And, you know, the data that I'm gonna walk through today is gonna highlight, hopefully, some things that stand out to you that are, you know, either interesting or promising or concerning, whatever they may be. But you can find those in every system you look at. So you tell me the county, and I can show you the complexity that's built into the system that's really gonna show you that these systems are never gonna hit the like victory bell and say, we've done it, we've built the perfect system. It is always about trying to improve. You can think of it just like a hospital, right? A hospital's quality assurance process never says, okay, we did it. We're a safe hospital, right? They are constantly working to improve the process to try to protect patients and prioritize their health. But what does an effective child welfare system look like? I think there's a couple of things worth talking about here. The first thing I would say is that it's one that's immune to the pendulum swing. So if you work day in and day out in child welfare, like I do, like Judge Hudson did, like many in this room do, you're very familiar with what I mean by the pendulum swing. But just for the sake of sort of zooming out, there are often two schools of thought within the child welfare system. And one of those is really rooted in child safety, and we should do everything to protect children. The sort of competing narrative to that is family preservation and that we should do everything to try to keep families together. And you will hear a lot about the pendulum swing of how we go back and forth between those, where the narrative is really shifting, where we're a system of family preservation or we're a system that prioritizes safety. There's a lot of words that I could use that would sort of fit into those buckets, but that's kind of the general high-level overview. And an effective child welfare system, I would argue, is one that embraces the complexity that both of those competing things can be true. And we have to live in that space. So we want to see a system that recognizes that both family preservation and child safety are important. And we're not choosing between the two, but we're embracing both. The second thing I would say, an effective child welfare system is, is it's one that protects children it knows about from ongoing harm through interventions tailored to the risk. So there's a lot in that phrase. So let me unpack some of it. What do I mean by protects children it knows about from ongoing harm? I know Commissioner Sanders is gonna follow me and share some remarks. Commissioner Sanders has a staff of investigators and child welfare workers. You heard Judge Hudson talk about mandatory reporting. Her staff is not walking around neighborhoods randomly knocking on the door asking, you know, can we come in and see if your child's been abused and neglected, right? We are a reactionary system. We are waiting for someone to call us and say, I think this child may be at risk of abuse or neglect. And maybe that person's a doctor, maybe it's a school counselor, maybe it's a teacher, maybe it's a neighbor, maybe it's a friend of the family. But we are reactionary. And so once CPS knows about a child, then we really want them to find those interventions that will protect them from ongoing harm. There is lots to be done in the primary prevention space, but that's not what I'm talking about today. What I'm talking about today is the obligation of keeping children that we know about safe from ongoing harm. That's an effective child welfare system. And those interventions tailored to the risk. So what do I mean by that? Child welfare has a lot of interventions in its tool belt. There's a lot of things that it can do to try and protect kids. Removal, when they actually physically and legally separate a child from their caretaker, is our most protective intervention. It's the one that, and by, as a sort of corollary, it's our intervention of last resort. But there are things short of removal that we do all the time to help protect kids that are in situations that we're concerned about. And so we want those interventions to be tailored to the risk. So just as a quick example, the best one, I hate coming up with hypotheticals because there's always the like, well, what about, what about? But you can take the classic example that shows up on child welfare's radar quite a bit of a domestic violence situation. And so maybe there is a mother, just for purposes of a hypothetical, and her child, the mother is being victimized by her boyfriend, let's say. And maybe the child has experienced some of that. Um, and maybe the child has experienced some of that, uh, domestic violence. Maybe they've witnessed some of that domestic violence. We know that's harmful too, right? We want to respond to that in an individualized way to address the risk of that family. There are plenty of situations where we can see where the mother might be demonstrating protective capacities, right? Maybe mom wants to move out, but she doesn't have control of the finances, right? Maybe mom has called and tried to, uh, get an order of protection through a legal services organization or a, uh, magistrate court or whatever court handles that, uh, in Harrison County. Those are protective factors. Those are showing us that mom's doing her best protector kit and on and on and on. The person we need to remove from the situation there is not necessarily the child. The person we need to remove from the situation there is the perpetrator of domestic violence. And we have tools to do that. There are other situations where same scenario, but maybe mom's not acknowledging it. And maybe mom isn't taking those protective actions. And maybe mom went to a shelter but decided to go back, right? And maybe mom's keeping the child in the home, not protecting them from those ongoing domestic violence concerns. Any number of situations that could sort of elevate that risk where removal may be necessary. But what we don't want to do is default to if this, then remove. It's that individualized determination, uh, based on the circumstances. And we want to respond in a way that is tailored to the risk of the family. The final thing I will say is that we want a system that minimizes time children are separated from their family. And I use the word family very broadly here. Um, as you started to hear a little bit from Judge Hudson, I'll talk about it a little bit later. There are many types of families and a child that enters foster care, uh, may be re-unified with their caretaker. They may be discharged to custody of a relative. They may be adopted into a new home. That's their family. And we want that to happen as quickly as it can safely be achieved. And so we want to minimize the time children are separated from families. And what that really starts to look like is a very carefully calibrated system that is responding in a very individualized way to the concerns that are brought before it, whether that CPS intake or the, uh, juvenile court at a shelter care or an emergency request. Here. There we go. One of the things that, uh, I want to just cover very briefly is a little bit about the data we're going to look at today. So it's known as the AFCAR's data. It's been a federal requirement for nearly three decades now. So the moment the phone rings at CPS and someone's making an allegation of abuse and neglect, we start tracking a lot of programmatic, demographic, and even some outcome data on those children and families. And we track that all the way through till the moment they are done with our system, whether that is the investigation closes and there's no further action or they are removed and spend time in foster care and are ultimately adopted. And so the federal government has required states to take that data and submit what we call AFCAR's files every six months. That is the data set of record for children in foster care. So from a, Judge Hudson talked a little bit about the, uh, the funding scheme, uh, that, uh, is at play between the federal and state governments. They are using those data to, uh, to, to count the number of kids in foster care. They are using those data to pay the per diems to the foster parents or the, the group home providers or whomever is paying for those kids. So this is the data set of record. There's a lot of data in there that aren't that reliable, but there is a ton of data that are very reliable. And you can understand why if you're a caregiver wanting a per diem, that needs to be in the system, that you are their caregiver as of this date. And I don't think we're going to be very happy if we're a foster parent and we're not getting that monthly per diem that we desperately need to provide care for these children. So it's the official data set of record for children in foster care. Small things, always counting children, never counting cases. So when I say a number, I'm not talking about like a sibling group five. That would be five kids in my, my, uh, my analysis here. There's some other words up there that, uh, you can use at your next cocktail party to, to try and sound nice and fancy, link longitudinally and duplicated. All that means is that every six months we get these files and we link them over time. And so we can tell which child in this file is which child in this file. And so we're linking them so that we can see. And by duplicated, I just mean that let's say in a six month period, and this, this happens, a child enters foster care twice. So they're removed and then they're discharged and then they have to come back in. That's not a good thing. We don't want that to happen, but it happens. It's rare, so re-entry into the system. That's two removals. So we're doing a duplicated count. So I'm not just saying that child's one removal, that child is now represents two removals. Um, finally, it's a gold mine, I'll spare you my sales pitch, but, um, it's a really valuable tool. So the idea is that hopefully today I can show you a little bit about where you've been, where you're at, and that can really help inform where you're headed. Um, I will say with these data, there is no right number to any of the metrics I'm going to show you. So when we talk about the number of children in care, it's not like I can tell you, well, it should be seven, right? There's no thumbs up and thumbs down to many of these metrics. The work is far too nuanced and far too complicated. We can make some value judgments about some measures, but again, we really want to be more curious about what can these data tell us about the system? And does it align with the system that we hope we're running to see in Harrison County? The first thing that I, uh, want to talk a little bit about, and I'm just going to do this by way of looking at, uh, at some national data, is this idea of variance, these differences. And so one of the things that struck me as, as early as I started doing this work is just how different these systems are. So as Judge Hudson said, the system is very regulated at the federal level. Now, states of course can add to those requirements, but by and large, the federal government's kind of setting the foundation for what a foster care system should look like. So we're all generally operating under a similar system. There are plenty of differences in, in state laws, but at the foundational level, um, like when a child should be removed, that's pretty uniform. You're not going to get a lot of different state. You're going to hear that same language, imminent risk of harm, contrary to the welfare, reasonable efforts in every jurisdiction you go to. More importantly, even within a state, we're operating under the same system, right? That is even more so than, uh, these other jurisdictions. But one thing, and I can pick any metric within the system, there are very few metrics that are sort of immune to this idea, is that we see vast differences across jurisdictions in the rate at which we do things. So this is removals. So how many children are entering the system at any given time? And what I've done here is I've just set the national rate right here at a hundred percent. National rate's not the gold standard. Again, I'm not saying we all should just be trying to beat, you know, 2.1 per 10,000 children. But it's a good basis of comparison. If we're going to, if we're going to compare across geographies, let's do it relative to the national rate. And what you can see is there are states like West Virginia, which are considerably higher than the national rate. They are removing, uh, I think it's around maybe 600% of the national rate. And then you see the states all along the way. There's Mississippi surrounded by some friends and neighbors, Alabama, Louisiana, Hawaii, not quite a neighbor, but I know we'd all probably let's go there. And then all the way down to other states, uh, you know, New Jersey currently has the lowest removal rate. And I'm not going to tell you which of those is good or which of those is bad. It's just context, right? And it shows us one thing that I think is really important. And this used to be a lot more fun. Virginia used to be the lowest, but West Virginia's always the highest. There's just no way around that. But the, the bottom three kind of shuffle back and forth. It used to be Virginia and that was fun because I could talk about West Virginia and Virginia and how just adding west to the name, you know, increases the risk substantially. But a child living in West Virginia is 17 times as likely to be removed as a child living in New Jersey. That's a significant difference. And that's part, when we see variance like that, that should start to raise a lot of questions. Again, I'm not saying West Virginia's wrong. I'm not saying New Jersey's wrong. I'm not saying anything in between is wrong. But when we see that much difference across geographies, systems operating in a very similar framework, that should raise some questions because we're talking about, as Judge Hudson said, the infringement of one of our most cherished rights. And yet, West Virginia is 17-fold over states like New Jersey, Maryland, and Virginia. Uh, there's all sorts of like hypotheses we could speculate for days about why this might be. And that's a good exercise to do, especially for your local community. Uh, but for now, I will just point out that variance. And that variance exists just as much here in Mississippi. So what I've done here is I've done the exact same thing. I've taken the state rate and I've shown the counties relative to the state rate. And here in the state, it's 14 times. So a child living in Stone County is 14 times as likely, uh, to be removed to foster care as a child living in Madison or Rankin County. The Soto used to be down there, it's, uh, it's bumped up a little bit. But again, this is now systems operating under the same legal standard, that same legal standard that Judge Hudson talked about. I can do this with removals. I can do this with in-care population. I can do this with CPS investigations. There is so much variance in the rate at which we do things. And these are variances across geographies. I should say, I, I removed 49 counties that removed less than two kids per month. They felt too small and you'll, they'll really skew the chart. So these are among the, you know, larger, uh, of the counties. But that variance doesn't just exist across geographies. That variance also exists over time. And what we're going to do is look at a couple of, uh, charts that will highlight, uh, that temporal variance here. And so these are charts that I really like to look at when I begin work in a jurisdiction. They pack a lot of information, um, into the chart. And I sort of refer to them as like the core hydraulics of the system. So this is our statewide foster care dynamics. And we're covering from about 2003 current through the end of 2023. So we're looking at it over time by quarter. And what that black line represents there... Oh, did I touch it? It's got, is it a touchscreen? Is that what it is? Look at that. I'll try not to do that anymore. How did that happen? All right, black line. That's just the number of kids in foster care at any given time. So you can see, uh, in 2003 hovering around 3,000, slow and steady increase up to about 2013. Then we saw a big spike. That peaked in, uh, 2017, uh, I think with just around six, just shy of 6,000 children in care. We saw it come down into 2021 and it's flattened out since then. That red line and that blue line represent the two primary contributors to the overall number of kids in care. The red lines, the removals. How many children are we bringing into the system at any given time? The blue line, those are our discharges. How many are exiting? And so we can see the relationship here. If we're removing consistently more children than we're discharging, it's not always this simple, but we're not surprised that the foster care population would be growing. Likewise, when discharges start consistently outpacing removals, we're not surprised that the overall population comes down. But this is another example of a pendulum swing. Uh, I don't, actually don't know what the pendulum would be here, what the competing views would be. But this is an example of variance over time, right? What would lead to this nearly doubling of the system and then cutting it in half in this short time period? And again, it's a good question to speculate, especially at the local level because you want to understand these dynamics. But my guess is often when we talk about this, what I often hear, because many states experience these swings, is it's not necessarily the needs of children and families, right? That's not what's driving this. Oftentimes, we can tie these to administration changes. We can tie these, uh, to high, uh, high, uh, words. High profile is the word I'm looking for. High-profile media event coverages, right? If something happens where, let's say that there was a child fatality that had some involvement with the system, well, the system may be a little less risky, right? They may start to remove more quickly than they otherwise would have. And that can lead to a system. We see this tied to funding. Oftentimes, agency gets an influx of funding. They can hire more people. What do those people do? They go out, they investigate reports and it generates, uh, more and more. So again, not, not sure what the right number is, uh, for any given system. But when we see these big swings, it should at least raise questions that make us really curious about what might be driving that. The other thing I'll point out here, which is just sort of interesting to me, is that you can almost just draw a straight line across there, right? And whatever happened here was reversed, but it's, it's sort of flattened out. And so again, I'm not here to tell you what the right number is here, but this seems to be a pretty consistent capacity, uh, for the state. When we dig in locally, uh, we're not seeing, uh, too much different here. So again, you know, hovering somewhere between 200 and 300 kids from 2003 to 2009. And then we saw a big increase. Came a little earlier than the state, but nonetheless, we had a big increase in the number of kids in care, uh, peaking at around 850 in 2017. Around 2019, we started to see that drop. You can see the red and blue lines doing the exact same thing they were doing on the other ones. Sometimes it starts to look like an EKG machine and it's hard to make any sense out of it. But, you know, clearly in the spirit of reduction, you can see that the removals are being outpaced by the discharges, which is contributing to that shrinking system. One of the measures that we like to look at are these, and I, I made a mistake and I have to apologize for it, um, but it's those LSU colors down there. I should have picked different colors, but, um, I know, I know where you're going. Uh, all right, so those purple and yellow rectangles down there. What those represent, take that red line, those are the removals. If you look right below those removals, those purple and yellow boxes represent the proportion of those kids that were removed that had previously spent time in care. They are re-entering care. Now, why two different colors? The federal government has said, when we finalize permanency for a child, we're going to ring the victory bell at 12 months. That should last forever, but we're going to stop tracking it at 12 months. And so as long as 12 months passes, even if that child re-enters after the fact, um, there's no real ding in the federal accountability process. So they're only looking at that 12-month window. So those purple boxes represent the children that are entering within 12 months of a previous discharge. And that really tells us that our permanency efforts were not sticking. Those yellow boxes are just the fuller picture. The federal government can have their timeline. We're distinguishing it here, but we can also just look at any timeline. And so those yellow boxes represent the children entering at any point after a previous discharge. 12 months, 15 months, 30 months, choose your own adventure there. And so re-entry has been a strength both in Mississippi and in Harrison County, um, relative to the size of the system. You can see, uh, really the last, uh, four, five, six years, it's been very, very low. And, you know, most of them are those yellow boxes. So, uh, the, the permanency efforts of the kids that are re-entering, you know, keeping the feds happy, but still not, not, uh, not that we should just adopt their values. But, uh, again, very similar narrative here where, you know, we're kind of holding steady, a little drop here, but you can also just, almost just cut right across and see that we're back in a similar, uh, area here. So I want to talk a little bit about removal in more depth. And I've already said this, it's our most protective safety intervention. And so, you know, as a corollary based, you know, largely on what Judge Hudson said, it's our safety intervention of last resort. So of all the tools that CPS has in its tool belt to protect children, removal is that one that we use for the most serious of cases. And so particularly for our youth court judges and our folks that work in youth court, you are most often exposed to, uh, the, the highest sort of degree of severity of cases. But what do we know about removal? The first thing we know about removal is that it's really effective at protecting kids from imminent risk of harm. It works. You separate legally and physically a parent from their caretaker, that caretaker is very unlikely to be able to continue harming that child. So we know it's an effective intervention. It's, and the research shows it's especially effective in the short term. If a child is at serious risk of imminent harm and they are suffering significant abuse and neglect, it's not just that they're safe immediately after that removal. We actually see wellbeing outcomes improve. That being said, there are very well-established risks to removal. There is a trauma inherent in removal that we cannot avoid. But even when we have to remove children, we can mitigate that trauma by using strategies that are, now I'm saying trauma like it's going out of stop. We can mitigate those risks by trauma-informed strategies. And so I've shared a couple of, uh, uh, articles up there. I'll have them throughout. Uh, there's a whole lot more research. I'm just trying to pick some like high points. But one of the things that we know that helps mitigate risk is when children are placed with someone they know. Typically, that's going to be a family member. It could also be a coach. It could be a neighbor, um, somebody that they know that mitigates the trauma. That trauma can really threaten child wellbeing. So we want to be really careful about what we do here. One of my favorite researchers on this topic is Dr. Monique Mitchell. And she describes this in terms of ambiguity, ambiguities. And so, uh, we know that the moment a child is separated from their caretaker, they've... And so we know that the moment a child is separated from their caretaker, they suffer from structural ambiguity. What is happening? What is this foster care thing? What, this place that I'm apparently going? They suffer from placement reason ambiguity. Why is this happening? I've been living like this my whole life. Why today is everything so different that I'm now going to be pulled away? They suffer relationship ambiguity. Who are all these people? Who's driving me to this office? Who am I meeting along the way? Who are these people that I'm going to live with tonight? How long is that going to last? The next one, temporal ambiguity. How long is this going to last? Children have a very different sense of time from adults. And so every moment can feel like an eternity, especially in those traumatic moments. There's also this idea of ambiguous loss or non-death loss. And Dr. Bruce Perry has done some really powerful research on ambiguous loss. And what I will say is that ambiguous loss, it's really easy to conceptualize. You know, if one of us were to lose a loved one, if like I was to lose my mother and she were to pass away, that would be traumatic for me. But I would be able to understand that she is no longer on this earth and I'm, you know, I'm not going to turn around the corner and see her. I can't contact her. I have to grieve that loss. Ambiguous loss is different. Ambiguous loss is when you lose somebody, but you know they're still out there. And that's non-death loss. So you can think about somebody being incarcerated, right? A child may not be able to talk to their parent that's incarcerated. They may not be able to see them whenever they want, but they know they're out there. Same thing when they're removed. And what Dr. Bruce Perry's research shows is that this is the most complex form of trauma for children. They cannot understand non-death ambiguous loss. I can. If my sister were to get arrested and I lost the ability to call or see her, I would be upset. I would probably be traumatized. I'd probably be leading the defense because my sister would never do anything to get arrested, but you know, nonetheless, I could accept that. I understand that there is something preventing me from connecting with her. Kids don't get it. They just cannot contemplate why if someone's out there, they can't be connected to them. So all of those ambiguities threaten child wellbeing. And so again, embracing this both-and thinking, removal can be a very effective intervention to protect children. It's a necessary intervention in the toolbox of CPS. We also want to use it when it's necessary and not overuse it or underuse it. So we're always trying to get that calculus right. Okay, so removals here, we've kind of already seen this in the red, the red line in the previous chart, but you know, just to sort of break it down, during the 2024 federal fiscal year, about 131 children were removed to foster care in Harrison County. So that's the most recent data we have. That would cover September of 2023, October of 2023 through September of 2024. So that 12-month period, 131 kids. On average, that's about 2.2 for every 10,000 in the population. We use that per 10,000 in the population so that we can compare across geographies that are different sizes. So it's just like a percent. It's just a way to sort of make everything uniform there. That's slightly, well, that's below, I don't know why slightly is in there. That's below the statewide rate of 3.2 per 10,000. So you know, it's, I would say it's a little more than slightly below, but it's really close to the national rate, although our national data are a bit more dated. So, but you can see that, you know, again, we have this sort of period of removals that were hovering between 2 and 4 per 10,000, then it jumped up, it's come back down and it's kind of flattening out there again in the 2 per 10,000 period there. So when we think about what should guide these removal decisions, so I've hopefully made a case that we should be really careful about deploying this tool and that we want a system that is flexible enough to be responsive and provide an individualized intervention. And so what should guide these? Well, the law and regulations, we don't have a choice about that, right? The legal framework that Judge Hudson outlined, we got to follow. Everybody that works in this system has to follow that. But we should also be looking to the clinical research. What do we know from this greater body of knowledge that will help us do this in a trauma-informed way? I think we should be looking at our data constantly to try to understand where we're at. That tells us what we're actually doing. And the question we should be asking is, does that align with what we hope to be doing? Because if there's dissonance there, we want to address it. And then of course, practice. Our own intuition, our own expertise, our own experience has to be guiding that removal decision. So it's the confluence of all of these different pieces that come together and give us the best way to make these decisions. Now, I did this in the context of removal. I'm not going to beat the horse and do it in every other context, but there's nothing special about removal here. Every process and every decision that we make in this field really should be guided by the confluence of these four different criteria. So let me just spend a little bit of time talking about placement setting and placement stability. Once a child is removed and brought into the system, we got to find a place for them to live. We have a lot of options that we can use. But the one thing I want you to know about from the literature is that Judge Hudson talked about 11, 17, I forget which number, 17 placement changes for his friend when he was 14 years old and growing up. Those placement changes, particularly when they're unanticipated, cause the same level of trauma that those children experience at removal. Now, there are placement changes where we're not traumatizing. That's where we're planning the placement. But a lot of those placements that we see in the data are placements that happen because things have escalated to a point where maybe the provider's not getting, you know, what they think they need to help manage the child. Maybe the child is pushing and testing boundaries, which these children do all the time. They put up walls, they, despite, you know, despite us saying that, you know, that this is a family that wants to help, that wants to step in, they're going to test those boundaries, right? That's a survival instinct. And so they will often do that, and that can lead to any placement changes, any number of things that can lead to that. But when we have a plan for that placement, that's just as traumatic as a removal. In terms of where we want kids, it's pretty simple. We want the most family-like setting that brings them closest to permanency. So if we can place them with people they know, like relatives or people in their community, in a family-like setting, that's the most ideal setting. If that's not available, maybe we have to go with more of a traditional foster parent. And as long as that's in a traditional family home and they're integrated into the family, that's going to be our next best option there. And on and on and down we go to the placements that are least family-like. And we talk a little bit about, the language here differs across states. At the federal level, we talk about congregate placements. And so that might be your group homes, that might be your institutions, your PRFTs, they all get kind of looped in. We can disaggregate them, but the point is, is that we want to limit those to those short-term stays that provide therapeutic support to address the high acuity needs. Those placements are an important part of the service continuum, but they shouldn't be used as a capacity, as a bed, right? If a child can be maintained in a family-like setting, that's where they're going to do best. And so if we look at the most recent year, that federal fiscal year 2024, we look at all the kids in care and say, okay, on 9/30/2024, what's the breakdown of where they were placed? And what I'm doing is I'm comparing Harrison County here to the statewide training. And what we can see is that in Harrison County, half of them were placed in the home of a relative. So again, every case is going to be individualized, but from a trauma mitigation standpoint, we're off to a pretty good start there. So we know that those children ideally are in, or we, you know, again, every case is different, but the sort of broad assumption there is that there is some sort of pre-existing relationship. Doesn't always have to be like that. I know there's exceptions to every rule, but again, categorically, that's a good placement. Next, most popular is non-relative foster care. That's that traditional foster care placement. Trial home visit, that is an option under federal law and state law. A lot of times, you know, parents may be working that reunification case plan, they may be getting really close. And we think that the child can go home, but maybe we don't want to just close the case and do that today. We can do what's called a trial home visit, where we keep the case open, we keep the obligations on the department to monitor the family, but that child has gradually gone back into the home and we have what we call a trial home visit before we close the case. So lots of states don't use that. I think it's a good thing to use to keep that supervision, and you can see where that's at there. Institutional and group home placements, together, those are the congregate placements. Relatively low utilization here. And then you can see the other two options, pre-adoptive home runaway. This is a point-in-time measure, so pre-adoptive homes have, there happen to be none on this particular day, but they are utilized some, but they're, your two main buckets are relative and non-relative foster care. And again, those are those family-like settings that we want to prioritize. One of the things I want to show here, we can, again, going back to 2003, watching it through 2023, this shows just the average number in congregate settings. And so we know that when children are placed in congregate settings in contexts where they're not there to have those high acuity needs met, but they're there more because of a capacity issue, we know that they have heightened emotional and behavioral challenges. We know it hinders their ability to form healthy relationships. And so we are setting them further and further away from the ability to achieve legal permanency with a family if they're staying in those unnecessarily long. And what I'll say is that congregate utilization in Mississippi and in Harrison County has been relatively low, relatively stable. But I would say, you know, there's been a little bit of an uptick here at the state level in the last couple of years, and just a slight uptick here, but nothing like, oop, I touched it again. There, there's the thing came up. But you can see it's not increasing nearly at the pace at the state level. So something to keep an eye on, but again, very low use of congregate care. And you know, again, you can just go into Google Scholar and ask it your question and it'll come up with a number of, number of studies about what the impact of congregate placements have on children. Two minutes, all right. The last thing I want to highlight is permanency. So when we remove a child from their caretaker, particularly, well, regardless, if we remove a child from their caretaker, one of our main goals, of course, is to keep them safe. But we also want to give them a family. So hopefully, that is the family that we remove them from. Hopefully, there is some service array that we can provide that will make it safe for that child to go home. But if that's not possible, we want to be able to discharge them to the custody of a relative. We want to be able to discharge them perhaps to adoption with a family that's interested in that path. And during the 2024 federal fiscal year, 98.2% all but one child exited to foster care to legal permanency. And it's really, I mean, you just can't beat that. If our goal is permanency, this is one place where we can make a little bit of a value judgment. 98% is a pretty good discharge rate. What that means is that children aren't exiting to some of these non-permanent outcomes, like transfer to another agency. Typically, when we see discharges to transfer to another agency, a child welfare system, we don't see this in Mississippi, but you know, a child welfare system is washing their hands with their older youth and saying, you're now in the juvenile justice population. We're done. And they just transfer them to the custody of JJ because of some act they did while they were in foster care. We also see emancipation. They turn 18 years old while still in care. That's about the worst outcome that we can see short of a fatality for a kid that we took away from their family. Our promise to those children should be, we're either going to get you back to your family where you can be there safely, or we're going to find you a new family. And those kids that are discharged to emancipation or these non-permanent dispositions, we failed on that promise, and the outcomes for those kids are grim. So you can see the sort of bucket of discharges here during the most recent 12 months of all the kids that exited care in Harrison County in red, statewide in gray. What was the disposition? And the headline here is that these are all good outcomes and good dispositions, and they're making up nine out of the 10 exits, more than that, 98% of the exits. These non-permanent ones are the ones we want to minimize, and Harrison County has long done a good job of minimizing those negative, non-permanent exits. So adoptions are up quite a bit. You can see double the state rate. And I'm not going to go into it too much, but a big reason why is, let me not even go into it too much at all. A big reason why is that there was a, there is a, from that big peak, there were a lot of kids that were still in care, that were sort of in care for two, three, four years. And there's been a significant focus on finding adoptive families for those kids. That's a hard thing to do. The longer kids are in care, it is increasingly difficult to achieve permanency for those children. Again, they build up walls. Oftentimes, we tell children, hey, we've got this family, they're really interested in adopting you. Well, until you're not the cute adorable kid anymore and you've painted their garage black because you're mad at them, right? And then you go to maybe a shelter for a little while, and then we find a new family, right? And we like that family until you start struggling in school and, you know, you're getting in fights and you're not fitting in and you're, again, they build up walls and they press. They believe that you're going to fail them, so they take control of that and they push you and they push you and they push you. This is well documented in the literature. So that is a hard population to finalize permanency for, because a lot of times when we talk to those kids about what their goal is long-term, because as they get older, we engage them in their own goals. And when we talk to them about adoption, the most common thing we hear is, well, I don't want to be adopted, right? That's what, it's in the files constantly. And what we know is that if we dig underneath that, they desperately want to be adopted. They don't trust the system to do it. And they're not going to make themselves vulnerable to go to another family to where that might let them down. And if they do, then they're going to push and push and push to really test that family. And that's a hard, hard place to be. So a lot of those recent adoptions, that 50%, why there's so many, was really working through that backlog, which is a big strength for this community, to have, a lot of jurisdictions would see those kids just kind of age out slowly. Not all of them, but many of them. And so to have that low emancipation rate and a high adoption rate is really a strength. My contact information's up here. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to ramble on about some data for probably longer than I was supposed to, but I will turn it over to Commissioner Sanders and I'm really grateful for your time. And please feel free to reach out if I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Is that on?
That is for recording.
Oh, it's just. Okay. All right, well, good. I'm loud enough.
Is the green light on?
Nope.
It's on record.
Well, it was on red when I got up here. Okay. Well, first of all, y'all have heard a lot of information, and I want to thank you for taking the time, two hours every Friday morning, to be present and to be interested. It's a strength in this community that I don't see everywhere. So I'm here to back clean up, obviously, and now I'm realizing the method behind that madness. I will be the one left up here when the question and answer period comes along. So, and I know that I expect you to have a lot of questions for me. So I've been the commissioner of Child Protection Services now for, ironically, today is exactly 4.5 years, and that's 1,642.5 days, if you're interested. I feel every one of them. It's also 1,642.5 days that I've gone to sleep every night, if I sleep, knowing that I am responsible. For somewhere between, when I started this, we had around 3,600 kids in custody. Today, it's 4,129 live souls. The first thing I do every morning when I wake up is look at my phone to learn how many children I have. And yeah, I've got about six data points that I start my day with. So it's been a privilege and an honor for the governor to ask me to do this job, but it is a heavy yoke. And I am, you know, I'm happy to have been able to serve my state in this role, but I'm much happier to see communities like Harrison County, they're taking a strong invested interest in what's happening to your children in this county. You're a government body. You know the limitations of government, budgets. We don't have unlimited funds, do we? Limitations on how we can spend. Limitations on how we can spend that money. Limitations on exactly how far we can go as a government actor. And so, you know, I think you can appreciate the state government agency trying to be a parent to 4,129 kids is, it's imperfect. And I heard it stated best by a young man who did graduate out of the foster care system as Christopher was telling you about. I don't like, there's a terminology that's common. It's called aging out. I hate that term. Because it just indicates that they got older and went somewhere. But I heard this young man talk and it really spoke to me on a lot of levels. But he had spent 12 years in the foster care system in Minnesota, in and out of the foster care system. And he said before he started, he said, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to find an imperfect solution to an impossible problem. And so we're all here today. This all started with the death of a child in the spring. It is the hardest part of the work that we do. And it is, it's a reality of the work that we do. Infant baby DJ died after he was only four months old. And the thing that that death and the response has done is it's brought you all to the table. And you have taken action. And so I think that that has led to this point where we're all willing to sit in a room for two hours and talk about what's realistic and how can we in fact make children safer in Harrison County. So I want to just, how many of you are parents? Yeah? Or you know a parent, don't you? How about back here? Family is one of those things we're all really familiar with. We're all part of a family. Being a kid is something we're familiar with. We were all kids. Being a parent is something that we're, almost everyone is at least familiar with what all goes on in the course of parenting a child from entry into this world to launching into adulthood. And, you know, if you just follow the rulebook, it all works out, right? Yeah. I've got a 20-year-old and a 25-year-old right now. And so it's messy business. We're not particularly well-equipped for it. We're not trained to do it. Most of us get in and do the best that we can. So I don't know if any of you have ever been like on vacation with other parents with their kids, maybe people in your family. Y'all have exactly the right, the same opinion on how to parent, don't you? I quit going on beach vacations with other family members with small children. It was agonizing. And that's because, you know, we all have, we have our own experiences we bring to the table. And, you know, we have what we were shown by our parents. So it's tough and it's not an exact science. So I'm going to say today, we're here in the room to talk about how the state parents 4,129 kids today and what we can do, what can we do to make that, to make better outcomes from that? I know that in this room, there's a lot of strength. Faith-based community is well-represented. Foster parents, other judges, staff from my office. And everyone in this room is going to have a different opinion about how we fix this problem. The strength in the room is that we're all here because we want what's best for children in Harrison County. And the commitment that I see here today, this is a first for me in my five years, or four and a half years, to come before a board of supervisors who's willing to listen and learn from evidence, from data, from science, various points of view, and then to be a part of trying to craft a solution. So I see a lot of strengths in the room today. You guys in Harrison County, you really do have sort of the perfect atmosphere for really taking it to the next level to make Harrison County a good place for kids to grow up. You've got an active CASA. You've got an active Children's Advocacy Center. You've got, you've got the strong government involvement and interest. You've got, in our programs down here on the coast, we're able to fund some early intervention services. We fund a kinship navigator program. And I've got to confess, I don't have the funds to do it all over the state. But it's an effective program that's run through Catholic charities. And it funds a clinic that Judge Alfonso and, I believe, Roger Wilder, are you here? Yeah. That clinic's specifically designed to try to help keep children in their families if that's possible, to overcome the legal obstacles and hurdles. So it's a program we're proud to fund. And I wish I could provide it all over the state. But we're talking about Harrison County today. You guys also have a hospital, a very good, you know, well-equipped hospital that has its own NICU. You have a labor and delivery unit. And you don't know how very sadly rare that is in counties in Mississippi today. You also have very interested and invested doctors, the lawyers at the hospital. You've got some mental health solutions here in this area of the state. You've got substance abuse treatment that is better than what we have in other parts of the state. And you also have an active group of legislators and your law enforcement is concerned. I've met with all of your law enforcement, all the chiefs of police from, that serve in Harrison County. And the truth is, it takes all of these systems to keep children safe or to keep children safer. So there's some real, there's some real strengths here. The challenges are, you've got a high volume of kids and families and you've got a lot of transgency in terms of people coming through the county and, you know, moving throughout to border, to states, in and out quickly. But today, I'm really, I'm encouraged because we've got those pieces in place. We've got a lot of passion and a lot of interest. And so I'm hopeful that this can be the beginning of true collaboration in Harrison County so that we really do start to prevent deaths and we start to make Harrison County a safer place for children. I'll give you a little bit of data. I know you've heard a lot today. Y'all run around, on average, about 260 referrals to our hotline every month. It fluctuates somewhere between 250 and 300. We screen in 70% of those calls in Harrison County. The national average for screening in for allegations, for an, we screen in for an investigation. I'm sorry, I should be more clear. But we do a full investigation on 70% of the calls that come in in this county. That's, you know, as Christopher said, that's neither right or wrong. The national average is around 50%. You're consistent with most in the state in terms of number of cases that get an investigation. You also generally run, sorry, let me get my notes straight. I have put aside a note card. This is not specific to Harrison County, but the infant mortality rate in the state is an important context within which children are born. We, our infant mortality rate, and that means any child that dies between date of birth and first year of life. So it's about twice the national average. We have about a 9.2 to 10 children die in that period of life per thousand kids in the state, where that's about five in other, or nationally on average. So those causes of death, number one is congenital deformities. Number two is accidental or, and they, for statistical purposes, they put sudden infant death and sudden unexpected infant death in the accident column. But number three is short gestational term. So babies that are born too early and babies that are born sick already. Drug exposure, poor, just not good prenatal care. And that's, that's an issue across the state. We are, it's one of the places we're leading. And that's not a great place to lead. It also means that our children are born fragile to start with, a large percentage of them. So part of the solution is making Mississippi healthier and safer for children. And that's a big lift. But in that context, when we know that we've got the high number of children that are born with low gestational, or short gestational periods, they're born too early and that don't have prenatal care, one of the things that we have to think really carefully about when we're talking about making children safer or making Harrison County a better place for children to grow up is if we don't get parents invested in prenatal care and keep the door open for them to come get medical care, then we're perpetuating that problem. And so that's one of the reasons you hear this talk about balance between, you know, one tool is removal of the child into custody. But when it's overused, parents know that. So they're not going to go get prenatal care if they also know that they're going to have drugs in their system. And that creates a further problem. So the goal of what you've heard about plans of safe care and the work that's going to start this afternoon in a workshop is that we want to balance that need to keep, to get that infant, this unborn child, the kind of prenatal care they need to have a good running start when they get out in the world. So these are tricky questions to answer. Do we take the kid? Do we not take the kid? You heard Christopher talk about that, that decision-making. And he talked about the state having a pretty, you know, a tool belt with lots of tools in it and that removal into custody is just one. Unfortunately, in Mississippi, my tool belt's really light. I don't have lots of services that the state has invested in that are demonstrated to start to get, make families healthier and get the problem upstream before we end up having the abuse and reacting to an incident that's already happened. We have brought some in, as I mentioned, and there's a good concentration of them on the coast. You just also have a lot of kids. So, but the question, one of the things that I find helps people think about this differently is we can all kind of appreciate what it's like to have an injury. So I want you to kind of imagine with me, if you get a piece of glass in your toe and you go to the ER, are they going to chop that foot off right now? Are you going to have your foot indicated? Do you want to? No, that's not the right response to that injury. We hope there's going to be maybe some tweezers and a scalpel and some, you know, some hydrogen peroxide and maybe some stitches, right? If the toe's turning black when you go to the ER, the response is going to be different, right? You might lose that toe. But you're still not going to cut off your whole foot, probably. If the foot's black, the foot needs to come off before it kills you, right? And that's really kind of the type of decision-making we're trying to make in these very sacred spaces of family. Do we, cutting off the foot is akin to removal. We're not going to be able to put it back on right. It's never going to work the same way. We can put a replacement in there, but it's necessary sometimes, right? I mean, a small percentage of the calls that come into me are about children being tortured. Children in cages and closets. And so we have to always reserve the system that we have to be able to respond to those things. And, you know, let's be, let's be honest. Those are crimes being committed behind closed doors. That's why it's so important to have law enforcement invested because often we shouldn't be the first responder when we know we've got a, you know, a habitual sexual abuser. We're on the scene. But, you know, if it's domestic violence and there are guns involved, those are the cases where it's really clear, the foot has to come off generally for that child's safety. It's when you get back into these other stages of diagnosis that are really hard. And when I say that a small percentage of my calls are about the kid in the cage in the closet, that's because I have a very high volume of calls. We field about 35,000 a year in Mississippi. So, and it covers everything from, you know, a child is dirty at school, doesn't smell good. And that's a concern, that can be a warning sign. But, you know, when we, so we, when we get the call about the serious abuse, that one's much more clear. Even then, when we cut off the foot, if we put a new foot on it, that injury will always be there. That kid is, they've already been through significant trauma. They're going to be traumatized again. But that's, that's the clear indicator that that's, that's when the government really must act. Those places in between of pulling out the piece of glass, putting the peroxide on, that's where communities really come in and can start to wrap around kids and families and prevent us getting to an amputation over here. And I'm saying all that to say, not that the agency doesn't have primary responsibility. Do not think for a minute that a minute goes by in the last, what did I tell you? Forgotten the number of days, that I don't feel that responsibility and carry it with me everywhere and my two phones. But I can't do it alone. Government is not nimble like that. And we're not funded to be all things to all children. There's a limit to where my funding ends. I'm at a sort of critical point right now in funding. But there's also a limit to what government should be doing in family space and community space. So I am here to be part of a solution. I am very, very encouraged by your interest and by the strong support in this room for the children of Harrison County. And I pledge to you that my agency will never be perfect. I promise you that. But we are here at the table to work with you to figure out how to make Harrison County a good place for children to live and grow up. So I'll close there and ask you for questions. You're really able to ask everybody questions. It's not just me. But I'll stand up here and take the, field them and parse them out.
Commissioner Allen, just out of curiosity, what group or what group of people generally do you get reports from of potential abuse? Teachers, doctors, which, which?
Schools and medical professionals are very high, a high percentage of those reporters. Yes, sir?
Medical.
Schools particularly. They, they see the kids every day, all day. Again, you get back to those opinions about what should be done. And they're seeing that kid in that context. So sometimes we get a lot of reports from schools because I can't tell them what I went in and did. And if the child wasn't removed from their parents, then there's some, you know, fear and dissatisfaction, lack of trust. So we end up getting repeat calls to schools. But, you know, again, I have to be diagnostic. There are some situations that just, you know, there are other tools that we should be using besides amputating the foot. So y'all have a very, that's another strength in this community. You have excellent public schools. You have some good private schools. You have excellent public schools, you have some good private schools, and your schools work well with the court. You've got a full-time youth court. Y'all are one of only 26 counties that have that. Every other county is served by a part-time lawyer who that's that's part of their duties. They do it on the side while they're running a practice. So I didn't really introduce myself. I skipped right over that. I'm a from Rankin County originally, a Mississippian. I got a master's degree in social work from Tulane back in 1992. I've worked in mental health and psychiatric hospitals for about 10 years, and then I went to law school at Mississippi College. And, yeah, my dad said I had a short attention span. I keep all I want to do is just keep going back to school. And that's true. I would love to sit in a classroom right now rather than trying to solve these problems. But I just it is it is it's a hard place to be in my career right now, but it is a privilege to be able to try to serve our state.
I want to ask a question of the board for a minute.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned baby DJ.
Yes, sir.
I think I ever got the baby's name, but this is a big concern for me because when that happened, this board was involved in it. And it was very upsetting, to say the least, about what occurred there. I was shocked that the hospital believed that it could only call the hotline CPS. And for whatever reason, they didn't get a response. So they released this baby who had, I don't remember whether it was meth or fentanyl, a very serious drug in his system that was four months old, as you already mentioned. They thought they had no choice but to release that baby back to the parents. And of course, two, three days later, the parents killed the baby or the baby died. It's alleged they killed the baby. And they were then locked up in Harrison County jail. The parents were both of them. The shocking part of it is when I was asked to attend a meeting where this was discussed, my first question was, why did when CPS didn't respond? I'm not blaming CPS. I don't mean that because I understand that what's going on with this large number, but there has to be a solution. I said, why didn't you call the police? Why didn't you call and go, well, we can't call the police. We'd have to call CPS. And I agree with them, they have to call CPS. But there's nothing that prevented them from calling the police. And the police chief eventually came in and had a meeting and said, yeah, you should have called us because that doesn't anything do with placing the child. What it has to do with is removing the parents and putting them in jail. Hopefully, you're helping them by getting them away from whatever drugs they're doing. They wanted to know what they were going to do with the child. Well, the child would stay in NICU until you were able to get CPS or the courts involved to decide what was happening with the child. But to turn that child back over to those two parents under those circumstances, to me, was appalling, and it's still appalling. And more appalling to me, two things they said. We can't call the police because HIPAA prohibits us from disclosing to what's going on with the child. So I immediately pulled up my phone and did HIPAA child abuse. And guess what? HIPAA exempts from HIPAA allegations of child abuse. But that didn't apply. And then the second thing is the statute requires us to call CPS, which it does. I don't disagree with that. But that is not the only solution. So I'm asking for CPS and others involved that they need to communicate to these hospitals and medical providers because I understand the problem of the volume of calls you're getting, but where the child is at risk, in my view, if you can't get a hold of CPS, you ought to be calling the police. And so that's not going to take care of where the child goes to, but it's going to take care of the parents removing that danger to the child, at least temporarily, so that you have to now deal with it or not, or leave the child back to the to the parents where they're obviously laboring under the whatever drugs they're taking also. Look, I I have a private practice. I won't even take a case involving meth because those folks, I'm sorry, God bless them. I hope they get relieved, but they just you can't get them. They don't want help. It's just it's just I don't think I've ever had a case where the meth, they didn't go back. No matter what we did, they went back and back and back. It's just a terrible drug. And I think baby DJ was meth, maybe it's fentanyl. I don't remember. Either one of them are bad. And so I I just would like to know, first off, did CPS agree that you can call the police? That's okay.
Losing my voice, sorry.
It's okay. Did the CPAs CPS agree that the hospitals are not? Certainly, they got to know to call the hotline. The the hospital, if they can't reach CPS and they've got that situation, I'm not just saying hospitals, any medical provider, they can call the police. That's not prohibited by the statute that says you must call CPS. Do y'all agree with that?
I do agree with that. I will say I believe there's some factual discrepancies and I'm
Well, I lived there, so I don't know all the issues.
Under the the law, I'm not allowed to share confidential information about cases except when there's a death. Exceptions can be made, and then, of course, the court can. I'd like to just outline the timeline of what happened in that case if that's permissible to everyone. I resisted doing that while I have the right to because when we when we just point fingers at each other.
And I'm trying. I'm not
I know, I got you. And so what I want to tell you is, and this will give an illustration of how complex these cases can be. So baby DJ was born, his test indicated that he was not he did not have drugs in his system. The test done in the hospital and known to the hospital at the time of release. I believe there were some amounts in mom's system that was a cause for alarm. They put the baby in NICU for a few days and then they released the baby because there were no drugs in the system, his system. And then they got a cord blood test back, which takes longer to be processed. And I will tell you, Gulfport Memorial does a cord cord blood test, I think, on every baby. They're they're very vigilant about trying to catch
I was trying not to name names.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I didn't want to blame anybody.
We all only got one labor and delivery in one NICU, and that's a lot more than most counties have. But they so they called us after he was released from the hospital. And, you know, we're always at a we have more advantage when the child's in a secure location and we know where the child is. We did search for the child, for DJ and his family. The mom had been a pretty stable mom with her first child. She was known to the pediatrician that saw them later. She wasn't in any of the places that she said she would be or that were related to her or that we could find that were related to her. Mom up in Louisville, there were some addresses here in Harrison County. Should we have called police in for a search then in retrospect, knowing everything we know now? Yeah, we should have put out an APB on this baby.
Well, I'm not saying CPS. I'm saying the hospital has that option. If they believe criminal conduct's involved, and I would say a baby with meth in its system would certainly involve criminal conduct, they have the option not just to notify CPS, CPS, but to also notify the police and let the police handle it. The police may decide the same thing. I I don't know.
Well, and and, you know, some steps have been taken to make that a more likely outcome in Mississippi. And that's where I think that these community collaboratives that that identify and commit to certain rules and practices. You can you can have some practices here in Harrison County that I don't have the option of in lots of counties. And that's why I say this this is all a real strength. But that baby then showed back up, DJ showed back up for a pediatric appointment at about two months, like it was on time. And in that appointment, that pediatrician didn't have the information. She knew about the I I I don't know exactly. I don't I don't know who the pediatrician was at this point. But the mom pointed out some bumps, a concerning bump that was growing on the child's chest. She was concerned. She ordered her she or he ordered x-rays and but the child was discharged before the x-rays came back. The pediatrician also knew the mom pretty well, and she'd done a good job with an older toddler, a two or three year
I'm not sure that's the same case because the doctor came here.
That's the NICU doctor.
She came here and said that the child had drugs in its system. Y'all correctly get them wrong. I'm getting old. My memory's not always good. And and they called the number, hotline, and they waited and couldn't get a call back, and they were forced to release the baby. I'm not blaming CPS. My problem is they believed that they could not call the police because of HIPAA and because of the requirement to notify CPS. They thought that's all they could do. And I I just would like it to be clarified that if they believe there's potential criminal conduct involved, they can they can also call the police. That's another option. Eventually, the chief of police came in and met with agreed, yes, you can call us. I that doesn't address the issue where the child's going to go. What it does is address the issue where the parents are going to go, so they're not going to be able. And that baby died within a couple of days of being released.
It was after it was at four months, and it happened after that second pediatrician appointment where they discovered there were fractures. And at that point, everybody has enough to
Yeah, I think that's a different case, but that that one may have happened too.
Well, and I know that a lot of evidence was gathered and and information early in this case and
I'll find out what case it was.
We know a lot more today about that case than we knew in the first couple of weeks, as is usually the case. Let me let me tell you then what we've changed in practice here in Harrison County that I think has made an impact. We now staff once a week with the NICU. We send someone in to staff with the the nurses on the NICU when we have a baby with allegations. We don't go staff all the time. I don't have that kind of bandwidth. But we also have forged relationships with law or renewed relationships with law enforcement. I have a a strong team of leaders here on the coast. And so, you know, we have established that we need to call law enforcement when we think that, I mean, this was a child whose mom had a, you know, a male was involved, the father presumably that's, you know, down under arrest. But this was criminal activity behind closed doors. This was willful intent to avoid the authorities.
Right. I think, Tim, one of the things that concerned us, kind of, I I don't know if the word was shocked or concerned, when the doctor was speaking for this board, she indicated that she couldn't get in touch with y'all, that she didn't have a direct line, she could not get in touch with you. And that's what concerned us. I think that issue has been solved now.
It has.
But it it was just amazing, I think, to the board and anybody sitting in the board's audience at the time, that a pediatrician, I would assume she was a pediatrician, I'm not sure. But anyway, the doctor was indicating apparently she knew something was wrong, but she couldn't get in touch with you. And I think that was the issue that that concerned the board at the time, which I think has been, you know, what that has been solved.
But Well, without pointing fingers, you know, we run a hotline for the whole state, kind of like y'all run at dispatch, and nobody called that hotline until the child left the hospital. But there may have been some attempts to use a personal cell phone numbers are not very good in a government agency because we do have turnover. It is a reality of this work. This work eats the soul out of people who come in with big hearts and want to make a difference for kids and, you know, enter into the work. So while we have remedied, I've gotten my top leadership connected with both the hospital and the law enforcement, but at the same time, there's a reason that that hotline is so important. And and there's a there's a mechanism right on our website for medical professionals and other professionals who don't want to wait if the hotline is busy to fill out a e-report. And, you know, this kind of case would have would have been screened in within 24 hours. When we're in that situation where a child's sitting in a hospital and about to leave or, you know, another analogous situation is when law enforcement's on the side of the road with a kid, that's those relationships are critical, but it's always going to there's there's some risk there that the personal cell number or the person you had, you know, the chiefs of police also told me they struggle with turnover. So we're talking about, you know, I I will tell you one other thing we did. Judge Dickinson and I went and spent a long time at the at the hospital with NICU staff, nurses, social workers, and pediatric staff and ER staff. And so we discovered also that there were some things that could have gone better in terms of, you know, they were reporting. It wasn't for this case, but, you know, we learned that they thought it was critical to report within 24 hours before they have all the information. When we got a child in the hospital, it's it's, you know, getting all the information and really knowing what the nurses are observing around the clock about that parent-child interaction. Those are critical facts, and I can't send someone to camp out at the hospital. But it requires us meeting with people who know what happened on the night shift, the day shift. So those relationships have been worked on. It is, I think it is a one of the reasons we want to formalize this kind of collaboration through the work this afternoon. But it, you know, it is an imperfect solution to an impossible problem, but finding a criminal behind closed doors, I agree with you. That is, we need all of the powers of law enforcement in that instance.
I just think if they have
Hi, Mayor, can I jump in? It's Rebecca Powers.
Sure.
Hi, Ms. Sanders.
Hi.
Thank you so much for what you do. I know you and I have met, and I am so excited that we're all going to be working together. You're right, baby DJ's death was the impetus for the Harrison County Board of Supervisors to create the Blue Ribbon Committee. And it's just an oversight of experts and people in this long field for many years. Thankfully, we do have a direct phone number now to CPS, all of our healthcare providers, and that is a direct result of Blue Ribbon. So I want to applaud them. Back to baby DJ, his mother did have fentanyl in her system. It was a low amount. He did get sent home, and you're so right. They had no way of knowing that he was positive because the cord blood can take oh, seven days or more. But once the cord blood came back, that he too was on fentanyl at birth, that's when we all agree now in retrospect, there should have been an APB put out to find him. The family is clearly on different social services, food stamps, et cetera, and police could have immediately found them, and I'd say saved his life. Secondly, on his eight-week well-baby appointment, where the mother mentioned the bumps and the fractures, the broken ribs that were found in an eight-week-old certainly caused the pediatrician severe alarm. Any adult knows that a fractured rib is excruciating. And again, we as a society found baby DJ. He went back home again to the meth addicts and to the abuse. And at four months, our coroner had to pick him up dead with 16 broken bones. So that is what really was the impetus of the Blue Ribbon Committee. We have crafted something called Baby DJ's Law, and I totally hope, Andrea, and I think you will, support that. A lot of our legislators are already supporting it. And basically, the Baby DJ law would say that law enforcement is called because if CPS couldn't find the baby, the law would then send out an alert when that child is at serious risk and y'all are unable to locate him, which is fair. I understand it's a difficult thing if you couldn't find them. But instead of closing the folder and walking away, we would have law enforcement, just as if a 90-year-old man with Alzheimer's disappeared from his home, right? It would be on the news. It would be that. So I just wanted to ask you, and again, thank you for being here today, and I'm sorry, I had a little medical, I had a neck injury this morning, but I'm feeling better, good ibuprofen. But I want to ask y'all, you specifically, Ms. Sanders, would you support, I'm hoping and praying, the Baby DJ law to be passed throughout the state? And that's our hope and goal.
Ms. Powers, I I can say that I will definitely sit down in the table at the table and review that. You know, I think that it's tricky with policy. We always have to balance, is your police force and your sheriff's office We always have to balance, is your police force and your sheriff's office, do they have the bandwidth to field? At what point should those calls go to them? Um, and so, you know, what we don't wanna do is create a situation where we're over, overcalling them in. But yeah, absolutely, uh, in terms of, of conceptually, I, I would be happy to sit down and, and talk about whether or not, um, you know, what we think the feasibility is. I, I, you know, I think that there does need to be some give and take with your law enforcement, with us, with, um, that the spirit of the law, um, I think is, is, uh, you know, right on the spot.
Great, thank you. And so, you know, the Blue Ribbon, we have met with all local law enforcement leaders, and gosh, it ran about three hours. They told horror stories of being so frustrated when they're not called. They begged to be called, um, horror stories that some have said, I, I won't even get into it, but they, they do feel left out. In other words, they'll pick up a two-year-old with severe, you know, bruises, whatever, and they won't even be called by our local youth court to be interviewed on the stand during the trials, and they want to. And I just, speaking for them, they desperately want to be called. So I do not believe they would be overburdened, because CPS is overburdened, as we all know.
Well, we, you know, we're all...
It's been a long before you came in, and I know you're doing your very best.
Well, thank you for that. Um, and, uh, yes, I've had similar conversations with your law enforcement here in Harrison County, and I think they're a real strength to bring to the table.
I know we did...
Thank you.
One more thing, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this. I don't understand, I think maybe this is the reason, the legislature passed a law saying that if somebody shows up with controlled substances in their, their bloodstream, highly a discover. That that's not a reason for removal. Why would that, uh, Judge Hudson, why would, why, what is the logic in that? I would think that would be a red flag. Of some nature, you do something to see if this, these children are exposed.
This is that tension we were talking about earlier, the federal law that was passed in 2016 and the movement towards, um, you know, uh, making the right intervention instead of coming in with a scalpel rather than a, you know, a big tool. But, um, it's why real formalized work and that with the whole community is the key to that being successful. And I'll tell you, in Mississippi, um, in your county, um, almost zero calls get screened to CARA. CARA's the name of that act. We, we had to enact some legislation to be in compliance, but the goal of that is to try to make it safe for parents, moms, to give prenatal care and to get into treatment if they're willing.
And I'm not, I'm not advocating that, that child be removed. I'm just saying, it seems like they're trying to say, okay, that's okay, if you have...
No, it's, it's a limited use.
Okay.
I, I can respond to that too, because I, I think the purpose behind that is because, and it was national, because children were being removed simply by saying that they had those things in their system. I think it is a red flag, but it's not a cause for removal without there being a connection, that's what nexus, a connection between their use of whatever, whatever drug it was and the abuse of the child themselves. Which could be a supervision situation, it could be the fact that the child ha, has now in a drug, drug addicted type situation themselves. That's a nexus, but it's requiring that there be a nexus.
Well, we do have some...
I guess I'm, I'm a little old fan, the fact that the mother has taken drugs during her pregnancy and, uh, and, and affected, if you wanna use that term, the, the, the baby, when it's born, that's child abuse in and of itself.
Well, and I, there are instances where that is...
That's right, Marla, and this is fentanyl, let's remember, and this is methamphetamine, remember. This is not just, you know, marijuana per se. This is hard, hard drugs. And if you're on meth when you're pregnant, then you're certainly, I was, I, I don't think anyone in this room would leave their child with a meth or fentanyl addict that they cannot be cared for.
So there's a, um, there is a small percentage of, uh, and, and it's hard to know right now with Mississippi's support system the way it is, but, um, mothers have hormones in their system that make them the most protective they're going to be during pregnancy. And it is actually an opportune time, if they have access to treatment, that they will, they will look for it. Some mothers use in that first trimester when they don't know they're pregnant. Same way probably many of us had a glass of wine when we didn't know we were pregnant yet. But, um, those are really the cases where we have these, you know, a hair follicle that says it was used at some point way back here. Mom is in recovery and has been clean for three months, or mom is in recovery having the baby and willing to go to recovery. Um, the real, the real key in Mississippi, the reason that's a very small percentage, is we just don't have the, um, we don't have enough of the resources, um, and we don't have a coordinated plan in the community for being more surgical in that diagnosis. Um, I hear you, uh, it is bad act when somebody uses when you're pregnant. But to be fair, you know, there, many of us do things in that first trimester because we didn't know we were pregnant yet. So it's not, it's not an across-the-board thing that we're saying, we're gonna take everyone who has used drugs and we're gonna try to, you know, keep their kids with them. There are, there's a weighing of the circumstances and the risk factors.
I'm saying, before she would be aware of it, you know, I can understand that, drinking wine or whatever. But I mean, five, six months to the pregnancy, she's well aware she's pregnant, and she's still taking drugs.
Yeah.
And I, I, I know you pointed out what the law is, I'm just saying, the law doesn't make sense to me because I think that's child abuse when they're doing it, and knowing that knowingly they're pregnant.
And, and the fact of the fact, fact of the matter is, the court itself cannot get involved until the child is born. So the determination of whether or not there was a use of a terrible drug like that will happen after the child's born, as you would, as you would understand in that situation. And I don't think it's hard to make a nexus between the use of methamphetamine or fentanyl or something like that knowingly. The knowing use of that, once the, once the mother was, was pregnant, that is a nexus. That creates the, creates...
Yeah, so those, and those are, almost every single one of tho, all of those, which is almost every call we get right now, is going into a regular investigation round, um, and being investigated. Again, it'd be a lot better if we knew about this back in, you know, while there's still time to mitigate the damage, in the pregnancy. But, you know, we're reactive, the court is, is in a reactive posture, um, for that period of time when the baby's in gestational period. It's not perfect. And you know what, there's, our legislature meets every year, and, um, so, you know, like I said, I am, I am willing to be at the table and part of discussions to talk about, how do we create policy that protects children, protects unborn children, um, and, uh, you know, and also then has, we have better, healthier, live births. Um, how do we do that in a way that we don't encourage mothers to, just to hide from the medical system?
Just one, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse, uh, but what is the position generally of both parents are abusing drugs or using drugs in the home with a child? What would be, what would generally be the CPS's attitude toward those parents, and how would you deal with that? When, I mean, both of them are using drugs, you know, that's, that's neglect. Because if you're under the influence of drugs, alcohol, uh, there's a potential that that child would be neglected, especially a small baby.
Smaller, and, you know, when we weigh, weigh risk factors, smaller infants, high, much higher, um, risk because they have no protective capacity and they can't talk. Um, so yes, that, that would be weighed into the equation, um, and the, uh, you know, but, as you mentioned, if, you know, if you're parenting under the influence of alcohol, um, I'd wager to say there are many people who've done that. Some people can still be a very good functioning adult, um, and go home at night, and they're trying to parent while they're under the influence of alcohol. So there's a, you know, it's fact-specific. Fentanyl, much bigger deal. Drugs that can, uh, be absorbed into the baby's system, much bigger deal. So it is, um, you know, it's a, like I said, this is complicated work, it's messy, um, and there's not a perfect answer, but we wanna get to a good answer. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
No, I'm out.
All right, I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Motion to the jury?
I might say, I appreciate everybody.
Dagan.